May 11, regular session.
Very good, welcome this morning. We'll call this regular meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Grant.
Keesha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
Very good. I would entertain a motion on this morning's agenda.
Any motion we approve today's agenda?
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Very good. Communications, Jake, we've got one letter here.
Yep, there was one, it should be in your packet. It's just the standard consultation letter. This one is from the city of Knoxville and it's regarding their consultation meeting. They're amending their West Pleasant Urban Renewal Area Plan, which is in conjunction with the overall VA campus project. And they have to amend some of their urban renewal area documents in this whole process that both city and county are going through. So this is the consultation, your opportunity to go and hear their plans if you want.
Excellent, very good, thank you. Item five, our public comments, it's the portion of our agenda, item number four, that of what could comment on items not on this morning's agenda. Board cannot act on those items, but it could be topics for future board supervisor meetings. On the public comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda. Can I say anything? Okay, none here? Very good, we will move on. Item number five is our consent agenda. Before I entertain a motion on the consent agenda, Jake and I just wanted to make sure the board is aware on page 30, that's where we are including the claim for Prairie Ridge. So you're gonna see a substantial line item on that. But that is our ask from the city appellate to pay the contractor for the Prairie Ridge development. And this is tied to the bonds that we have issued. And in matter of fact, we issued 4.7. Jake?
Yeah.
So you see it's 4.553. We've done some due diligence and asked Mike to confirm, will there be any additional payments that will be necessary? And Mike is on. Mr. Nardini, do you care to comment on this at all?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you are correct. The city appellate, in accordance with our development agreement, we have accepted all public infrastructure at the Prairie Ridge development. In addition, in accordance with our development agreement, we've also hired an engineer, and the engineer in this case is Mr. Bob Beinster, Beinster and Kim, that did review all invoices associated with the public infrastructure. And we believe this morning, based on our qualification, Mr. Beinster's qualification of expenses, the total amount of eligible expenses at the Prairie Ridge development was $4,553,469.68, is what's been certified as a qualified cost for the development. And we believe the developer is eligible for the first payment, in accordance with the development agreement, which is reimbursement of roughly 4.5 million. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions on the Prairie Ridge development as well.
Thank you, Mr. Nardini, I appreciate it. Board, do you have any questions for Mike on this?
Mike, you said first payment, because this is the large sum of it. Is there going to be additional you foresee?
What we have as far as additional, the total qualification cost is just over $4,553,000. The first payment, in accordance with the development agreement, is the developer is eligible for reimbursement up to 4.5 million in the initial payment. Development agreement specifies by the total reimbursement of up to 4.7 million. So we believe the developer is eligible for the remaining $53,000 of reimbursements. In accordance with the development agreement, what they're eligible for is based on certificate of occupancies that are issued for homes that are actually built in the Prairie Ridge development. And the formula for the development agreement basically reimburses the developer roughly $2,600 per home that is built in the Prairie Ridge development. So that's, the first payment was in reference just simply to the infrastructure payment. The second payments are, we believe they will be eligible for up to $53,000, and that's based on the number of homes built in the Prairie Ridge development.
With a not to exceed amount that was in the agreement by all parties.
So is it safe to assume, Mike, that the infrastructure is in place?
Yes, Supervisor McCombs, the infrastructure has been accepted by the city appellate. The engineer on this was actually Klinger and Associates. And the fellow city councils accepted all infrastructure in place. We accepted roughly 6,400 linear feet of city street network and associated public infrastructure with that. And so we've already accepted this. It is important to note that the public infrastructure also included a lift station for the development as well. So we believe that the infrastructure has been built in accordance with city plans and specifications, and we've actually accepted all infrastructure. We own the infrastructure at this point in time.
Okay, I just wanted to make that point so everybody was clear on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Any additional questions on that? Very good. With that, I would entertain a motion on this morning's consent agenda.
Motion we approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
All right, very good. We'll get some big items. We'll declare the public hearing open. This is a notice of public hearing on the matter of the proposed authorization of loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $11 million tax regenerative capital notes of the county for essential county urban renewal purposes. Now, I just want to, for the board's knowledge here, if you look down these first four, we've got essential county urban renewal purposes, and then we're going to talk about essential county purposes. So that partially explains why we have so many items that we have to go through. Jake, Jake loves it.
Yeah, yes.
He knows that I love it.
It's fine.
Public hearing portion on the $11 million that capital general obligation notes that we are proposing to issue relative to the VA project. As you recall from our last meeting, we are in the process of signing an agreement. We have not signed that agreement yet because it was subject to the approval of this financing. And this will be the next one that we go through with VIT. And I'm gonna, Dana, am I getting?
I believe so.
I always.
I haven't asked them yet.
Right?
It's VIT.
What?
VIT.
VIT, all right. My bad, my bad. But our, based on the bid estimate that came in, they were the lowest bid that could reasonably fulfill the obligations of what we were asking contractors to do. Plus, we've got about $3 million of dumping fees built into this. And then we have about $1.1 million of contingency built into this. And after talking with Michael and Jake on this and conferring with Chris on some of the other extrinsic costs, we felt that that's a good all-in number, which is substantially less than the 15 million we were talking about almost two years ago. And the bids certainly came in at a price that was far under what we had anticipated. So we're very excited about that. So given that this is the public hearing portion, with that context, are there any public comments? None here in the room? Very good, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion we close the public hearing.
Second.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye, very good. So then we have Resolution 2021-48, which is a resolution to institute the proceedings to take additional action of not to exceed $11 million. So Jake, maybe give us a little background here on this item.
So again, it's like what you just spoke to, all, these items are all in conjunction with the potential financing of the VA campus demolition project. These items are actually giving the board the authority to issue bonds up to this amount. It is not actually issuing the bonds that will be at later, at later times, if, you know, everything keeps going along as it is with the steps that need to take place. So this is giving the board the authority under essential county purpose, urban renewal purpose authority to issue these bonds. And this is the official action allowing that. The next, just to speak ahead to the next items as you were, it's the exact same thing. This is not 11 million plus 11 million. This is $11 million, just different avenues of authority to be able to issue these bonds, when and if you guys need to do that for different purposes, essential county or using urban renewal.
Very good, very good, thanks Jake. And to highlight what Jake said for the board, this is giving us the authority to issue those bonds. And talking over with Michael, we're still kind of having some discussions on the form that that financing will take. We may do that toward the first meeting in June when we talk about that. Michael, do you want to comment on that at all?
No, I think we can take, the board can take action at any subsequent meeting. So our discussions are centered around that first June meeting. You complete all the loan paperwork at the second June meeting and close shortly after the Fourth of July holiday. So that's a good pace and timing, gonna be able to cover your costs doing that and gives a few more weeks for all the rest of the process work here with the city and the county to shake out. So I think that's a good timing for everybody involved. And with today's action, you'd have everything completed. We did complete the rating, the 883 rating for the county was affirmed. So everything is ready to go once you guys are ready to go, which is positive. In terms of structure, I think, you know, Mark and Jake and I have reviewed a couple structures. I think there's a couple options still to review, but, you know, not major differences between those, and we'll await instruction and be ready to go.
Very good, thank you, Michael. Board, any discussion on Resolution 2021-48?
No, I just thank you, Michael, for assisting us with this, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Once we award the contract and we agree to the bonding process, what would be, what are we looking at would be the earliest start date, do we believe, for demolition?
Well, I believe our documents, Dana, have May as they start, or sometime in May.
May 31st.
May 31st.
Because I know we're talking, he was saying, we're meeting in June.
The form of the bonds, we won't get a bill for this right away. So we will talk about the issuance. This gives us the ability to go and sign the agreement with our contractor, these items. And then we'll talk about the structure of how we want to issue those bonds from a financing standpoint. There are some interesting concepts we can work on that Michael's put together, and what might be most advantageous for the county. But then, once we go through that issuance process, then the money for the billing, much like Prairie Ridge, we'll get a bill, and then we'll pay that bill.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring that out because, you know, I've been asked questions, we haven't gotten to that quite, to that point yet.
No, good question, Steve, very good.
The first pay application won't be until the first month's work is complete. So by the time it's reviewed and sent to the board for approval, I would expect that to be the first or second meeting of July. And typically, the first one's not the largest one, it's primarily mobilization costs.
Similar to how we did the fall and when we did the elevator project.
Yep, very similar. So, very good, thank you, good question. Any other discussion on this resolution? If there is none, I would entertain a motion on 2021-48.
Which motion we approve, Resolution 2021-48.
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Now, again, declare the public hearing open for the second part of this. And this is, as you notice in parentheses, this is for essential county purposes, as opposed to urban renewal purposes, but just checking all those boxes of profitability. Same question, it is not additive, it's 11 million, still 11 million, not to exceed 11 million. Very good. Are there any public comments? Seen done? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Then Resolution 2021-49, which is the reform resolution on this action item. And again, for essential county purposes. Discussion, board.
Does this help, when we have the difference between the essential county purposes and the essential county urban renewal purposes, does that just check all boxes to make sure?
That checks all the boxes.
Okay. I don't have anything for that.
Good. Steve?
No, I'm good.
Very good, I would entertain a motion on this resolution.
We approve Resolution 2021-49.
One second.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Very good. All right, next, we have a bond disclosure council engagement agreement with Alders and Cooney. Next item. Jake, maybe?
So Alders and Cooney has been a bond counsel during this process. You guys have now have authorization to issue the bonds, and that will be forthcoming. Steve Nadle has been working with us with Alders and Cooney's. This is an official standard engagement letter agreement for them. There's a lot of lawyer work, for my fancy terms, there behind the scenes in issuing these bonds, and a lot of financial work. Michael Maloney with DA Davidson, who's on there, is the financing side of that as well. So this is, we use Steve and Alders when we did the Prairie Ridge bonds. It's just stuff that's outside of my box, our box, anybody at the county's box. And this is just their scope of services, standard operating procedure when the bonds are issued of this nature. So the fees are included with the whole bond processes and stuff like, and that of that nature.
Very good. Discussion. I think Steve and his group have done a great job.
Very responsive, always keeping us going. They keep us moving, responsive to changes, send, update documents, things of that nature, so.
If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion approving this engagement agreement.
Motion we approve Dan Cape'n agreement with Alders and Cooney.
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Very good. Now we have Resolution 2021-50, and this is our official statement. Jake?
I'm gonna pass this one to Michael, if that's okay.
Sure.
Thanks, Michael.
Yeah, sure thing. So this is really the last hurdle as a relation to the financing piece to turn us loose to go work on marketing the bonds. Obviously, we'll stay tuned for some final structuring, but this is another administrative step. This should look very similar to what we did for Prairie Ridge in the fall. This is the offering prospectus, it's called the preliminary official statement for municipal bonds. When the county issues bonds, this is the initial disclosures made to the bond market investors. So it's got information about what the county's trying to do, the project, the issuance size, the amortization schedule. And then the back half includes additional details about the county, demographic information, financial information, tax information, outstanding debt, your audit. It's very similar to what we did in the fall. Obviously, the specifics changed related to the VA property, the size and the tax status. So Alders, myself, and the county have been working to update this. Want to thank Jake for his feedback going through this and making sure we're up to speed. Steve's comments have also been included. So other than changing some of the dates and dollars when we get that worked out in the coming weeks, this is ready to go and quote-unquote print. Obviously, everything's electronic these days, but it's in good shape. This administrative step is the county authorizing use of this for us to market the bonds here. Again, we're planning to bring that for your first June meeting at this time, not next meeting, so want to be clear on that.
Very good, thank you, Michael. Board, any questions on this? Again, it is very, very similar to what we did for Prairie Ridge.
Michael, you said our rating was, we have been rated, and the rating is good?
Yes, yes, we had a good meeting with the folks at Moody's once again. You know, they were aware this project was coming. They thought it would be more dollars. As Mark had pointed out, the bids were better for this project and what we shared, what this might be during the Prairie Ridge process. While this is a sizable project and a sizable borrowing, from our perspective and the county's perspective, you're being compared on a national framework. So Moody's was, doesn't see this as a big dollar amount from their standpoint. It did not materially affect any of your ratios from the fall. The 883 rating was affirmed, as I mentioned in the fall. That's really maxing out what the county can have as a credit rating based on your tax base. It's a national framework. So while it's very strong for the state of Iowa, 883, you're just kind of capped there without significant increase in valuation. The VA property is helping to go in that direction. But that is the fourth highest rating on a national framework, competing not just against counties, but cities, state level, et cetera. So it should be very clear that's a strong rating and reflects the strong financial management of the county.
Thank you, Michael.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions? Very good, I would entertain a motion approving this official statement.
Approve Resolution 2020-50.
Second.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
You didn't say 2021, right?
Did I say 2020?
I, maybe.
2021, she said 2021.
It's what I heard in my head, but that's probably what I was expecting.
2021-50, that's my problem.
Thank you.
All right. Next is the, we'll call it the final approval of our contract.
VIT.
VIT? Have Dana hold up the G-4.
Exactly.
And, yeah, we discussed this at length in our last meeting, and they were on the call, I don't know, are they on today?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. But very excited about the bid that was received, and Chris and team and Dana did a lot of due diligence work, so now with the approval and author of the authorization to issue financing, now we can finally approve the contract for demolition. It's a big day.
Yeah, just like personally, thank everyone that was involved in this process, Jake, Alders and Cooney, everybody. I'm excited to see what's in store for Marion County now. Looking forward to this thing getting started.
Yeah. I mean, without getting too grandstanding, we've worked on this for three years now. Is that right, Jake?
It feels like it.
It feels like it, yeah. But between the work that we did as a board, the help we have received from so many people, and advice, Michael, Steve, the folks that have worked from the county perspective, Chris and his team, Dana, Aaron, Brian, the city council of Knoxville, it's been a total team effort to get to this point. So very exciting day to see this happen.
Would note that we had to do it on our own.
But Marion County has the bright future.
Yes, yes. Very good. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion approving our contract with VIT.
Make the motion to approve the VA campus demolition project with VIT Company.
Second.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Very good. All right, on to item number eight, which is a request from the local Henry Knox chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Do we know what we have here?
Yep.
You choose, it's yours.
Well, actually Janet had contacted me, and Barb and Janet, I believe you have a little bit of a presentation?
Yes.
Ladies, welcome.
Thank you. We submitted a PowerPoint for your review prior to the meeting. Janet and I are members of the Henry Knox chapter of the Daughter of the American Revolution, and we are coming to ask permission about placing of a marker in the celebration of the upcoming anniversary of the American Revolution in 2026. And so the national level has made available some 30 by 30 bronze plaques as markers to place in preparation of the celebration of this anniversary. And so we are requesting your permission to place this 30 by 30 bronze plaque on county property. We are hoping that you would consider the courthouse lawn in Knoxville. I submitted some pictures of different areas that were possibilities. The bronze marker has an anonymous donor that's paying for it, there would be no cost to the county. The Henry Knox chapter would also cover the cost of placement, and so there would be no cost with that. And we are basically just asking your permission to place it, requiring a letter stating that permission that we would have to submit for us to order the plaque and get it sent to us. Marion County is named after General Francis Marion, who was an American Revolutionary War Patriot. Knoxville is named after Henry Knox, who was the first Secretary of War. This will be the first application to place this marker in the state of Iowa. Currently, the state region says there have been 19 applications in other states, but this would be the first one in the state of Iowa. So we're asking you to consider accepting that, to just determine which place, the positioning of it would be best, and that's it.
Very good.
Yes, just basically, we need your approval. We cover all the expenses. We put together the suggestions, the different places. We have a preference, but you're the boss, you're the best. And it boils down to that. We thought the PowerPoint would explain it better, that way you can see pictures, ideas. It does not have to be immediately decided upon. We can present it to you, let you think on it, and as Barb said, all we need is a letter with your signature's approval, and then we can proceed from there.
So we're not basically asking to add it to the Veterans Memorial that is there. I have a picture there and one of the cannon. There's a lot of space between those two places, so we're not asking to incorporate it in the Veterans Memorial currently, but we kind of prefer the northeast corner of the square, but the southeast corner also has lots of other items placed there and stuff too, so your decision to where it would be best.
How big are you guys thinking?
The plaque is 30 by 30, would just be mounted like on a metal pole to the ground.
Okay.
And it's all pre-printed. At the bottom, it will say donated by the Henry Knox chapter, the DAR.
Okay.
I'm assuming what we have so far is a pole, tight mounting, and I don't know for sure if we have to do that, we haven't been told, if we have to provide it to fit on there. But then we would want to put into a foundation, sturdy tight foundation, so it doesn't get to leaning or anything, which our chapter would be willing to hire contractors to do that.
I appreciate you guys bringing this, you know, I know that you contacted me, and I thought that it would be best that, you know, we present to the board so that they could hear at the same time. And also to have our facilities manager, Chris Nast, to be as our facilities manager, or director, I don't know where we put him. But, and he would probably, you know, we would have to work with him if this is something that we decided to do, but yeah.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, ladies, we appreciate it.
And I appreciate you referring us on Keesha when I visited with you, but she said I can't do this, but come to your meeting and, yeah.
I just thought it would be easier so that you guys, because I knew that you had a presentation, which is great, and that is very helpful, and being able to have some visuals, so thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, ladies. So discussion?
I will say, I think that it is rather nice that, it's my understanding, has anybody else applied in Iowa that you know of? Or is you guys the first ones?
We're the first ones so far that we've been told.
Okay.
We're hoping to be the first.
Hoping to be the first? Okay, all right. And then do you also have somebody else here in town that is a representative? Is there, I can't remember, Suter, Sutter? What is that?
Marla Suter is our state regent for this two years, this year and next year.
Okay.
And she is the one that got our Henry Knox chapter started again. It was originally the Marion Marion chapter, more or less died out, dissolved. They merged with Oskaloosa. It then piddled out. And Marla contacted different ones to get us to start this one again. I believe it's been ten years, you know, in the process of getting it. You have to prove your direct relationship to a patriot with documentation. It takes a lot of paperwork improving it. But it's also quite an honor to say you are a descendant of a patriot. And then, you know, it follows down. We thought also the marker would be the involvement with the Revolutionary War. We have the statute for the Civil War. And then we have the black granite markers for wall one, two, and down. So we thought, why not add it to it and be the first in the state to promote it?
Steve?
I'm not opposed to the project whatsoever. Do you, do you have a form letter that you need or do we have to, do we have to make that letter up?
We had the form we had to fill out to get the bronze marker, but we don't require a. It's just a letter from you saying that we're supervisors of Marion County and approve it and approve with what our idea or location or what location you decide. So there's not a strict form letter.
The letter does not have to designate the site though, correct? I mean, we'll have to figure that, we have to figure that out after, after the fact. Okay, so we, so we have to provide, or we have to?
Provide a document that the people in charge of the property give their permission to have a copy.
Okay. I'd have to talk maybe over the form letter. All we have to do is sign it.
No.
Okay.
Chris, do you have any, do you have any?
I think it's a neat idea. I'm all for it. Yeah, we can help, you know, with setting of it. You know, there's a few things I'd like to, I like where they want to put it and I fully support the northeast corner of the square and that. I just want to make sure we space it properly for mowing. I'd hate to not be able to fit a mower in between it and the cannon. So the space is going to be pretty important, but we take care of little things like that. I think it's a great natural fit for it. And I agree, it'd be nice to be first in the state, so why not?
Well, I think have you help us with?
Today's, more than a day and age, I think it is very appropriate, yes, to have something like this and be first in the state.
I don't, I don't know the time sign, once we submit our application, but how soon it will be to us and the plaque. So we have a little bit of time in there.
But you need our letter to send that application in, correct?
Yes. And we have to send the PowerPoint footage and all the information.
Okay.
They want a general sketch of the place and where we plan to like put it when we submit the application.
Absolutely. I think it's a great idea. Love it.
Thank you.
Board, is there a motion approving an application to receive a 250th American Revolution plaque donated by the Daughters of the American Revolution?
Placing it, Chris, you're okay with the northeast?
Absolutely. I think it fits great there and they work on it.
So moved.
Second.
Who won? You and?
Yeah, I get to be second. Keisha took two of them.
That's right.
Okay. McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. No.
Can that be used there to either one of us?
Okay, yep, we can leave a communication and, yeah. Yeah, if you want to give us your, you know, leave us your address or something or, Raimi, if you can get that or something.
I have Janet's information.
You have Janet's information?
Yep.
Good, okay, thank you.
Next, we have Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-one, which is the South Central Iowa Cedar Creek Watershed Management. Twenty eighty. Steve, we're still doing this?
Yeah. Originally, we had, we had signed a twenty eighty that basically says the same thing. But since that time, there have been other entities come on board.
Okay.
Within the, within the watershed, there's been a collection of other groups joining. So that was easier for to, to get grants. And so some of these other entities wanted some of the wording changed, but it basically says the same thing. So I don't have a problem with it basically saying, we don't pay, the county does not pay for anything. So I'm okay with the, with the new twenty eighty.
Very good. Keisha?
No, I'm gonna rely on Steve on this one since this is his commission, so.
Very good. Is there a motion?
And we will approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-one.
One second.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good. Any updates?
I have none.
I do. Super excited. Next Monday, drum roll, we're going to have launch our new website. Yep, so the seventeenth, I believe that is. Yes, so.
Will it work?
It will work and it's very exciting. I hope that you guys will visit it and check it out. I hope the media will share. There's drone footage on it.
Okay.
So, yep, and we will be rotating that. And Neapolitan Labs has done an excellent job, Brian and his staff working with us and Andrew and his staff, so.
Andrew was showing me some of it to hear a week or so ago. It really looks nice.
It's.
Good. Excellent. I'm excited.
Yep. And the turnaround time, I am so excited for that. I mean, you know, we, we started talking about this, you know, just a couple of months ago and we were able to keep it going and it's been much needed.
I believe it's going to be very user friendly. I'm very happy about that.
Very good.
I'm not real capable in some ways now. It looked really, really.
Good, excellent. I look forward to that. All right.
Nothing, nothing from my perspective, so the only piece of remaining VA will be the twenty eighty between us and the city of Knoxville. I'll be catching up with some folks this week on that. And hopefully have that resolved in the next couple of weeks. So, but, big deal today. Lots of good stuff.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to close our open session before we go into a closed session.
So moved.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Okay, May eleventh, back into open session.
You back already?
Yeah.
All right, good. Entertained a motion to reconvene to a closed session.
So moved. Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
All right, very good. The results of closed session was a performance review of Marion County staff member. No further action was deemed necessary. And with that, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.